All right, we'll call the November twenty 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 four City Council meeting order. Commissioner Smith, will you give us a prayer pledge and fact of the day, please, sir?
Our Father God, we come once again, thankful for the many blessings that are stored upon us. Thankful, God, this opportunity for us to celebrate during the season of Thanksgiving. We pray for all those that are less fortunate that their needs may be met during this time of the year. That we be ever grateful for all that you have done for us. Remember, to whom much is given, much is required. This we pray in our Son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On November nineteenth eighteen sixty-three, at the dedication of the Military Cemetery in Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, during the American Civil War, President Abraham Lincoln delivers one of the most memorable speeches in American history, the Gettysburg Address. In fewer than two hundred seventy-five words, Lincoln brilliantly and movingly reminded a war-ridden republic why the Union had to fight and win the Civil War. The speech reflected history-defined belief that the Civil War was not just a fight to save the Union, but a struggle for freedom and equality for all. This was Lincoln's stirring conclusion. It is rather for us to be here, dedicated to the great task remaining before us, that from those honored dead, we have taken increased devotion to that cause for which they gave the last full measure of devotion that we here highly resolve, that these dead should not have died in vain, that this nation, under God, should have a new birth of freedom, and that government of the people, by the people, for the people, should not perish from the earth. Fact of the day.
All right, want to read the decorum statement for everyone. Welcome to the public meeting of the City Council of the City of Apopka. Please turn off all cell phones or turn them to silent. The City Council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the Council for action. If you wish to address the Council this afternoon or evening, please make sure you have filled out a card with your contact information and have presented it to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone, stating your name, address of record, organization if any, and direct your comments to the City Council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The Council and the city's staff encourages constructive criticism. However, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting, disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violation of these provisions may result in the issuance of verbal warnings, including warnings for trespass. If violations persist, after such warnings, violators may be removed from the Council chambers. Okay. Looking for a motion to approve the City Council meetings of November the sixth? So who? Got a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Blaskas, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Jack, any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay. All right, we've got seven consent agenda items. Anybody need to have any of those pulled, if not look for motion to approve? Someone? Got a motion by Commissioner Blaskas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Lake Apopka Natural Gas District Board of Directors vacancy. I know that we had, so obviously Bill Aerosmith, who's here, is resigned from the board. And I know that he'd made a recommendation for Bill Spiegel to be on the board, but have also then heard that maybe somebody on the board might want to serve in that position.
Oh, okay. When I attended the grant presentation, I had learned that they, that a former Vice Mayor, Bill Aerosmith, had resigned. But they had said they were looking for another elected official. That is why I followed up and asked to return to the board because I had sat on the board before.
Okay. Okay. All right. Yeah, so I'm just, that's the will of the Council? Look for a motion then to... Anybody else, anybody else want to throw a name out there?
I was unaware of that. Of Mr. Bill Spiegel wanting to serve. That wasn't mentioned at Lake Apopka.
Yep, okay. So looking for some direction here in the Council?
Okay. Mister, Commissioner Smith? Would that be a problem, me returning to the board?
I have no problem at all, no.
Okay.
Would you like to make that motion then?
I move that Commissioner Velazquez will serve on the Lake Apopka Natural Gas.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, discussion regarding the city-owned properties as surplus, Cliff Shepard. This is pertaining to the property on Well Street.
All right, if I recall correctly, this is the item where the last meeting, at least the last one that I was at, there was a discussion about providing it to, I believe it's the Rotary Club, right? For some improvements that they plan that perhaps are a long-term benefit. That's for y'all to decide to the City of Apopka. I am understanding that the, one or more of the commissioners wants to revisit the issue. At the last meeting, I believe it was, a decision was made to go ahead and go through the process of declaring it surplus.
Well, let me just say, that wasn't the reason. It wasn't that we wanted to revisit it. I was told or was educated that we can't surplus it because, or we can't have somebody else use it because of the deed restrictions that are in place.
Yeah, well, I had sent an email to that effect that was provided to me after the fact.
I just want to make sure it's clear, we didn't, I didn't, at least, that was not my intention to take it back. It was, I was, I thought that we could no longer surplus it or provide it to anybody else.
Certainly without a release of that restriction, that was my understanding. That was after the meeting that Ms. Sherman provided me that information. And I said, I think, if you might have seen the email, but I don't know if you did. I said, if that restriction applies to that property, she assured me that it did, then yeah, we are already at a non-starter because we'd have to get the release of the deed restriction. There's a process by which you might be able to get a release of that deed restriction, but that would, in terms of order of operations, that horse would have to come before the cart.
And I just wanted to clarify that, that it wasn't that we wanted to start all over. It was, new information was provided that, from my understanding, that we couldn't do this anymore.
Yeah, well, in my mind, it was some combination of both, but yes, that's what started it.
Okay, thank you.
Was there further discussion with that?
The only thing that I know is what was provided to me by Ms. Sherman, who assures me that that deed restriction applied to that property. So I guess the question would be for you tonight is if you still would like to go down the road of surplusing the property, then we would need to see if there's a possibility to get that deed restriction released. Because, again, assuming that she's correct, and I have no reason to doubt her, it's on the property, without being released, there's nothing to surplus because it has a limitation on what the property can be used for, and this use isn't on that list.
So what are the steps to release the deed restrictions?
I'm sorry?
The steps to release the deed restriction?
Well, in this case, you'd have to go back to, I think, to the Department of, yeah, FDEP, Department of Environmental Protection or something, because they gave us a grant. And as I recall it, it had to be park or open space or something like that, and not for what the Rotary had in mind. And so would they give it? Don't know. But the first thing is for y'all to say, go explore and tell us whether they'll entertain it. You know, we would present the information y'all got from the Rotary, what the plan was, and why we'd like them to release it, and see if they'll agree. They may or may not, I don't know. When they give money, they have a purpose in mind. And in this case, the purpose was that open land, park it space kind of a situation. Will they agree to a modification for this use? Maybe, don't know.
So I'd move to see if we can go back to see if we can get a modification for the change of use for what the Rotary is...
Well, yesterday at the agenda review, I, the Finance Director had sent some questions to DEP. And while we were at the agenda review, she did get a phone call.
Okay.
There was some information that I'm not sure if the other commissioners have received.
I was not copied on those emails, but if Mrs. Sherman has some information, I'll be happy to step away from the voicemail.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Yes, we did receive that phone call. One of, Commissioner Smith had asked that we contact FDPEP and ask them three separate questions. Can we replace the three acres? Does it have to be in close proximity? And does it have to be land that the city currently owns? We did have a conversation at that time, and she did follow up with the email. And basically, what they're saying is that the deed restriction is intact for the twenty-five years that started in twenty twenty. And should we want to move forward with the intention to surplus the property, there's a process that we must go through. And it does have to be adjacent to it. Doesn't necessarily have to be anything that we own.
Adjacent as in a budding or with, just within a close proximity?
She used the word, in the information that I provided you, and the word that she used is adjacent. I asked close proximity on the phone, and basically she said, from what I can recall, yes. Because it's for that purpose. If we replace anything, even the improvements that they made, we have to replace those improvements because it's throughout the park. It is designated for an outdoor use. What is being proposed, as she understands it, is an indoor use. That would take a change. We have to do public outreach to see if there's any concerns or complaints, and then go through their process. Her words were, this is land, typically we don't want to give up that inventory.
Did, the email that you're referencing, is that in this packet, or is that, that's a new email?
That came afterwards.
Okay, can you forward us that too, please?
I will.
Thank you.
Okay, so the process is on that notice of site dedication and limitation of use. The process is detailed there, and she, that's what she referenced in her email.
So we need to go forward and with the process first, and then come back and surplus it? I'm not understanding what would it do?
No, I think that's the order we need to do. We need to go forward with the process to see what that looks like in regards to seeing if we can get it released.
So you do want to do the conversion? And how are we planning to replace? I mean, there has to be something...
Well, are we sure? I mean, the other question, the fourth question I thought we were going to ask was, does that not meet the spirit of?
Of the restriction?
Of the agreement?
You mean what is being proposed?
Yes.
I know that they were concerned about parking, and I did mention to them, I said, I think they're going to be adding some parking. And I think what I got from that, is it going to be adequate parking?
The answer to clarify all of that is to just say, here's the plan, the Rotary plan. This is what would be proposed. Would this be considered a violation if we were to proceed down this road? And the answer might be, no, it's fine, or no, so long as you can't retain ownership and don't deed the property away, because deeding the property away may be a trigger all by itself. So I don't know. But that's, the real thing for me to understand tonight, and I think for Ms. Sherman as well, is do you want us to continue down the road to see the art of the possible? And if they say, yes, if you do these things, like for example, identify another parcel that we are interested in, or something like that, and then we go through the, okay, yes, we could do it, then you just ask maybe, maybe Mr. Williams, was, okay, find us another parcel. You know, we just have to follow the steps. But we are well before the surplus part, because we don't have permission to do that yet.
So that was my concern, was that we had surplused it. So when I asked to reconsider the vote, was not to have the property sitting out there as a surplus. I was concerned that, let's do the, everything that needed to be done before we can authorize it to be a surplus.
And I have no, if someone wants to make a motion to rescind the surplusing of that property, that's probably procedurally correct, but not necessary, because with the restriction, it's going nowhere.
And the vote was to proceed with the process to surplus. And the process in accordance with ordinance thirty thirty is by resolution, and that has not occurred.
Okay.
So technically, per ordinance thirty thirty, we have not surplused the property.
Okay, so where does that leave that vote that we all voted on?
We can't bring you back a resolution until we get those other checks, other boxes checked. And we may never get them, but we'll be able to report back to you, okay, here's what we found out. Here's what we can do, here's what would be required, or we can't do this.
And keep in mind, it has to be a public use. So going to a private use, that's going to be a concern, that she brought that up as well, just want to share.
Yeah, well, it should be a public use, I mean, that's exactly what it'll be. But yeah, I think we need to lay out the Rotary proposal, send it to DEP. I mean, if we, if that's, I mean, if you oppose to it, then that's, that's one thing.
Is that the plan of the Council?
I think we should do it.
But, but are we deeding another property?
I think they were leasing.
Right, so...
But the deed restriction says you can't lease it.
Yes. It's still, is, right now it's for public use for outdoor park. So the question is, based on what they're proposing, as I'm understanding it, we want to see, by doing so, are we still meeting those requirements? Because according to the mayor, he's saying it still would be a public use. We're not giving away the land.
Right.
And there's still going to be adequate parking.
Attorney Shepard, is that your same sentiment, that this would still be considered a public use?
I don't know, because it's not me who gets to make that determination, since it's not my money that's causing the restriction. It's the departments. And so if they think it's sufficient for their purposes, then it doesn't matter what I think. But when I initially thought it, if you're asking the question, I thought it was sort of a combined use. It was going to be Rotary, but it also was going to be available for public use as well. Sort of like what we have at some level with the VFW and the community building. So that's kind of what was in my brain. But again, what I think is irrelevant to what FDPEP thinks. If they think, yeah, this is okay, okay.
I think we should go back to see if they're okay with the use.
Is that, I don't think we even need, really don't need to take a vote, we can just...
No, you've already got it on the table.
Right.
And I think this is more like a, we're revisiting it now. Everybody, if they weren't aware, is aware that there's a restriction that we need to figure out a workaround, if there is one, and report back to you.
Right.
And if they tell us, oh, no problem, it's all good, then we can bring you back a resolution. You can continue the surplusing process. And if we find out, no, it's an immovable object, and we're not the irresistible force, then we can tell you that too.
Yes.
We just don't know right now.
Yeah.
So I understand what you're saying, and I understand, yeah, go forward and find out if we can actually lease this property. The thing is, there was a vote made to surplus it, so that's still sitting out there.
The vote was to begin the surplus process.
Right.
Which requires a resolution, which is not going to be brought back to you till we can, if we can, bring it back to you. So there's nothing to undo, as long as you want us to continue looking at it. If you don't want us to look at it, and stop, don't do any more work on it, that's a different question. But as long as you are saying, continue to look at it, then you don't have to do anything more, because we're looking at it.
Okay. So the only thing I would ask our Finance Director is to provide us with the responses from DEP.
I will.
So that we understand what the restrictions are, or what they need.
Well, just so we're all on the same page.
Yes, and you have the document that she attached, is in the documents that I gave you previously. The only thing is, is just her email saying the same thing that's in that attachment, but I will share that email. And we will contact them. I don't have a copy of the proposals from the Rotary.
That's what I was going to ask, do you have a copy of the proposal from Rotary, so you can present it?
No, I don't have a copy of that proposal.
Bill Spiegel, do you have, you probably don't have it on you, I'm sure.
He can email it to me.
Email? We, yeah, we...
Is, is that, is that this one that you had given me back on June seventh? Is that the proposals, the same one?
Yeah, come on, come on up. Yeah, we'll just, we'll just move into public comment on the...
Was that the ground lease that you, that you look at this? That you gave me on June seventh?
Yes. Asked the question, Commissioner Blaskas, you'll ask the question again, so he can answer it at the mic.
Bill Spiegel Rotary Club of Apopka, P O Box seven, Apopka, Florida, three two seven oh, four.
I'm repeating the question. On June seventh, when we met, you presented me with a ground lease agreement. Is this the same agreement that we're presenting to DEP?
That we will be presenting... That's part of it, that would be the agreement we have with the city. But the building would be a separate agreement. The DEP has to agree that we, they, that, the ground lease is one thing, but the building and the parking the DEP has to agree to is a separate item.
Right, so I really think there's a couple things. One, the DEP grant specifically named the Apopka Athletic Complex and work being done there. The site plan that was attached talked about improving the playground and parking and things like that. So that's thirteen and a half acres. Basically, the site dedication is included in the DEP grant. It does say for public outdoor use for twenty-five years, but it does give the ability to lease and to convert the usage and change. I didn't see anything in the DEP grant that restricted any kind of subdivision of the space and thirteen and a half acres. That same general grant application was used, whether the city was receiving a million dollars or fifty thousand. So it's pretty broad in its scope, and it's in how it encompasses the restrictions that are there. But within the DEP grant application, there are some ways to kind of preserve the integrity of the, you know, intended use. They don't want you to get the grant and then tear it down three years later and have that money be wasted. So it did provide the ability to relocate it or preserve it within. Obviously, one of the big improvements that we had talked about doing was improving, significantly improving the parking area and increasing that, so that way it could be used by the community, not only directly neighboring with the, with Apopka High School and baseball overflow, but the athletic complex when they have tournaments and things like that, as well as the community center. So that was, that was our intention. So I don't know that the DEP needs to necessarily review the ground lease agreement between the organization and the city, but that was the ground lease.
So I did share with you also that, prior to our former Community Development Director, he had concerns, because I know that you had been in consultation with him. And I believe that he had shared that he had some concerns regarding the parking. That was a concern.
Yeah, so one of the things, I mean, we've invested a significant amount of time and money and felt like it was premature to really go through and do a site plan and survey without coming to an agreement between the city and our organization that we wanted to go forward. Obviously, we wanted to maximize the parking that was there, and our initial, you know, projection didn't utilize all of the space for parking. So I do think that there's additional resources and land there that we could have more parking. And, but we needed to get to a point where we had an agreement before we could even start talking about design.
So, so do you have a design available that you could share with them, so that they can share with DEP, so they can see what it is we wanted to do?
We have a preliminary concept design. I really think in our communications with Council members, commissioners individually, there were some different ideas that we're looking at possibly incorporating to enhance that design. But our initial one, I'd be happy to provide, we did get an architect to draw that up. And really, what's interesting on that initial design, it did actually preserve the playground area that was there and didn't interfere with that at all. So I'd be very surprised if the DEP had any problems with that initial design. So I can forward that, I don't think I have a hard copy with me tonight, but I can email it and forward it.
Okay. Yeah.
Keep in mind, we do have to go through a solicitation process. So we're going to need a full scope and design anyway.
We got to get, first step is make sure DEP is comfortable with...
Yeah, I mean, if everybody said...
Whatever, yeah, just your...
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty comprehensive that way.
Mr. Spiegel, I got one, so to confirm, and Commissioner Blaskas had asked us, I just want to confirm, the original presentation or scope that we originally discussed may be adjusting then. We just haven't seen anything updated, but it most likely will be different than what we've already seen.
Yeah, we really felt like to talk about a concept. We needed to have a starting point and a vision where we could start the conversation, and that was our full intention, was to start that, gauge the temperature of the Council and decide whether that was something that people would view as a worthy endeavor by the city and an investment for the community. Obviously, nothing was written in stone. And absolutely, that was really, our intention was to kind of refine it based on the feedback that we got.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Bill?
No.
Thank you for your time and happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, thanks, Bill. Anybody else from the public who wants to speak?
Leroy Bell, Amad Hill. I'm pulling for the Rotary Club. I hope that they can get it along, they go through the process like everybody else. And I see that the Council is behind, and because they do great work in the city. I have worked with them, some have worked with me. But I would just say, I would hope that you guys would consider them. And it seems that everyone that's on the Council is really pulling for these people. And, and we spoke the last time about hoping that we can kill two birds with one stone. That maybe this could be a place that you can feed the homeless, that they would consider that. And also, I would add, the same way that you guys got that energy, pulling for the Rotary Club, I would hope that y'all would come around and pull with that same energy for the citizens of Apopka. When it comes to them, with their First Amendment right, where they have a right to speak on public comment.
Okay, anybody else? Okay.
Sylvester Hall, thirty ninety-one, Rolling Hills Lane. I'm in full support also, but what I would like to see is a smoother transaction. If DEP is going to be the authority figure, before we start doing all this, I think everything that we want to do or plan it on doing, just run it by them. So don't, so we don't waste their time, we don't waste everybody else's time going through all these motions. If they're to, whoever is, whoever has the authorization, whoever is the deciding factor, what we want to do is send it to them. Don't leave nothing out, because if we leave something out, then we go through all the motion and get everything done. And when we get there, say, no, this ain't what you guys told us. Now we just wasted a bunch of man hours, a bunch of time, a bunch of everything. So the process for me is always simple. Just put everything up front, whoever is the, whoever has the authority to buy, put it in front of them. Let them say yes or no. It's just that simple. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Dr. O. In looking at the view of what's going to happen in that whole sector, we need a plan and to know what's going on. Suddenly, there were... Um, suddenly, there were, uh, foundations out there this past week on the area where the Little League area is. And for years, been suggesting tennis courts or people have thrown out a lot of things there, but now there's, footers. Uh, what is being built out there on, right up against the, uh, Mr. Martin's memorial?
Well, that's the.
On Martin's.
Waste water treatment plan extension, I believe.
Yeah.
What is it?
A wastewater treatment expansion.
Yeah, we're talking about on wells down by the, the.
No, right up against Mr. Martin's.
I, I know, but what we're, the, where we're talking about is, is not that.
I know, but this, the vision of this whole area, what, what is going to be in this whole area, including that, should be considered. And we need to see what this whole vision is, that they're going to be abutting and, and the people using this area is going to seek. And what's gonna, what the growth of this whole area is, it's not just an isolated item. And so what is being built right there at, up against Mr. Martin's monument that's going to be accompanying this structure? What is that footprint? Radley, are you building it?
Part of the water plant.
Yeah.
The water plant is coming out there adjacent to Martin Street?
Yeah, that's where the water plant is.
And it's coming clear out to Martin Street, up against the Martin Monument?
Richard, I don't know if you, I don't know what that has to do with this on wells, but.
Well, the, the wells comes out there.
No, no. There is a well down to that, uh, the new well we're putting in is on the south end of the property. But what I could do is I could look into it more and I could get commissioners an exhibit that shows where, uh, where the construction work out.
Are we talking about Wells Street or Wells in the Earth?
Wells in the Earth.
Okay.
Is what I'm talking about.
And that's what you're discussing as well?
Yeah.
In addition to.
Okay. Anybody else from the public? Okay, I really, there's not, really, there's not a, there's not an action item at this point. We just, uh, so I got, I guess, direction that we wanna go ahead and, and at least, uh, pose the questions to the D E P. We gotta get, we'll get, uh, Rotary will send us kind of a mock design on what it would look like. Uh, Blant, you gonna run point on that or you want Radley to do it?
Oh, do you want to?
Wow, wow, that was.
We'll work together.
Okay, alright, thank Blant. Alright, next up, ordinance number three thousand seventy-nine.
Ordinance number three thousand seventy-nine. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use settlement of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city residential, low suburban for property located at twenty-three hundred West Poncan Road, owned by Lee Jason Monroe and Lee Karadon, comprising three point five six acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
No changes? Okay, anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not opposed to public hearing, look for motion to approve or adopt ordinance number three thousand seventy-nine.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance three thousand eighty.
Ordinance three thousand eighty. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional to R S F one B Residential Single Family District Large Lot for certain real property located, generally located at twenty-three hundred West Poncan Road, owned by Lee Jason Monroe and Lee Karadon, comprising three point five six acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Any changes, Bobby? Okay, anybody from the public wishes to speak on this one? Not opposed to public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number three thousand eighty. Some, got a motion by Commissioner Blaskis? Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand eighty-one. What's this one?
Ordinance number three thousand eighty-one. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending chapter forty-two miscellaneous offenses of the City Code of ordinances by creating section forty-two point dash three, public access to city buildings, providing for recognition that certain areas of city buildings require regulation of public access to provide for the security and privacy of public visitors, city employees, and city officials, and minimize potential disruptions of the work of the city government, classifying certain forum areas within city buildings, authorizing the city administrator or designees to manage public access to city buildings by classifying forum areas and implementing measures to separate forum areas, regulate access, and ensure security and privacy, providing for violations, for unauthorized access, or disruptive behavior within the non-public and limited public forums, prohibiting unconsented recording of video or audio within the city buildings, except during public meetings, providing for authority to issue trespass warnings, providing for codification, severability conflicts, and an effective date.
Alright, Mayor, this is the, the security ordinance, if you will, for access to public buildings, uh, on second reading. Uh, just so for clarification, because some of you may be confused thinking, didn't we already do this? The city does have, as it was, uh, adopted, a security policy, uh, I believe by resolution that has been in place. That's why you've seen signs on the doors and various other places designating what is accessible and what is not. And it was made necessary so that all staff would know how to react in the situation of someone coming in and wanting access and knowing what was appropriate under that policy and not. What this does as an ordinance, it codifies, uh, some of the things that are in our policy and specifically gives the city administrator or designee, uh, or designees the ability to, upon viewing or observing a violation of the rules that are set forth in the ordinance, the opportunity to, uh, ask for a trespass notice be given or trespass warning be given by the P D. Now, this ordinance doesn't cover that, but what happens is once a trespass warning is given, then it becomes a police matter. If there's a repeat violation, that could be, could lead, uh, I'm sure that the chief will talk about this, could lead to arrest. But usually, the attempt is to deescalate and just get the person to stop doing whatever it is that they're doing. Again, all of which I'm sure that, uh, Chief McKinley can explain to you. But that's the purpose of this ordinance on second reading. I am pretty confident there's some public that wanna talk about it. So unless you have any questions for me first, I will stand aside.
What's the resolution number of the policy that's in place?
That I don't remember.
Do you know, Mr. Smith? No, no, okay. Yeah, so you don't remember what resolution number?
So it wasn't a resolution?
It, it, I, I know it came before this body, I know we discussed it.
It's decided.
I just, I, if it's not a resolution, I, I misspoke, but it was, it's not something that was adopted out of your view.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
Alright, alright, anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter?
Leroy Bell, Apopka. You know, it's, it's funny that this administration, John Lamb, for sixty years, for sixty years, kept the doors open at this city hall and the old city hall. I know, because I was able, as a young man, all the way up to the age of sixteen or seventeen, just before I graduated, went out to the army, I could walk into the city hall and go into his office. I played up under his desk from there over to the, the museum with Ms. Gillum Bell. I don't think that you got people here in Apopka that wanna harm anybody here in the city of Apopka. What you do is this, you got your crackpot police department, go check their records. How many times had they came up into the city hall and pulled somebody off of a employee? How many times have it happened? It's never happened. That's just like they saying that people go over in Earl Estate from South Apopka and breaking in. How many times you know somebody go over there and rob over in, uh, Earl Estate? It just don't happen. Well, this turned out to be, this turning out to be disadministration. Want this to be a murder. Disadministration, every time something happened, they run, he running hollow, oh, for the safety of my employee, the safety of the city hall. Half of the people in Apopka have served in the military, in the service and, and, and different services, foreign services. They wanna come access the city hall. But no, it is disadministration. They're trying to strong arm people. If this administration was above board and wasn't so under him, he wouldn't have to be scared. It makes no sense. And this attorney know, you can go downtown Orlando, you can go to any town round here in Orange County and walk up into the city hall. But it always got to be a problem with this man. It always, and, and you know, it, it, it really, it really don't irks me. It used to get up under my skin, but it don't bother me, Brian Nelson, that you sit up and, and snicker and grin. It just showed how immature and how dumb you really look. And if you guys, y'all not serving this guy, he didn't elect you, he probably helped you got elected. But ultimately, you guys serve the people of Apopka at large. And please, if you do anything, do something for the citizen of Apopka. Get a backbone.
Thank you. Dr. O. Some of you may have read this, some of you may not have. I sent it and one or two responded. Um, the top sheet is a suggestion and some alternatives to protecting city hall, um, as it is a fortress already. Um, and it's supposed, this is supposed to be the people's place. Um, we used to be able to have proclamations in the atrium and Christmas carols, decorations, and people could come in and enjoy the atrium and access. And the back door of the mayor's office, I could walk in and sit down and wait for Uncle John to come in to see me without an invitation. I could sit down and wait for him to come back in from a meeting. And, uh, I could walk into Ed Bass's office and sit down with him. Um, it's unfortunate we can't do that anymore. Um, I've suggested since before this plan came out is that we could come up with, you know, there's about a thousand people probably that regularly come in here. And we could do a frequent visitor's approval. If we can have international travel with a pre-approved badge, we could do it in city hall of Apopka. You know, those of us who come frequently could get a preapproval badge. Um, then two other options I've printed out there. One is the three or four entry points. You could have three badge scanners that could go on those three entries or four entries out in the atrium. And if a person needs to go to a second one, if they've gone to the elevator and they've utilized those rooms and then there's, they need to go to a different one, go back and get another pass to go to this entry hall. And that's more secure. Then the other way is to put a glass atrium, uh, sub atrium around the bathroom and the, the security area so that people can't rush past the guards being scanned and into the atrium and pass them. So it's like a small glass den security area where they can be checked. And it would just be easy access into the bathrooms for people. And if they have a problem with security, they can go into the bathrooms there and put their pa, their belts back on, their shoes back on or whatever they need, or have more security examination. Um, also on the backside, um, you'll see the federal and state laws. Um, right now, um, they, the one man got a hold of the driver's license of someone who came through city hall. Also, right now, if someone does a document request, they've been receiving the names of, um, the people who come for the month or whatever point of time they're requesting. And according to the federal law, as you have here at the top, you, uh, eighteen U S C twenty-seven eighty-five, and then the state law, it'll one eighteen dot oh seven twelve two, um, the names, phone numbers, medical history, disability, driving violations, except for driving violations and, and driver's status. The personal information is not legally allowed to leave this office.
Thank you. Anybody else, Susan? Oh, okay. Okay.
Sylvester Hall, Apopka. I'm just sitting here. This is a public building. This is city hall. Everywhere you go, you walk around, you can walk in. What if, what if I want to bring my daughter, just bring it to city hall? Let's do a tour, see how the city works. So she comes in and see the city on lockdown. And for what, for what reason? None whatsoever. I recently had a chance to watch the video of the gentleman who came here with the First Amendment right to protest all this, put the city of Apopka on blast. And you talking about having businesses wanna come here and sit up when they see something like this? Leroy asked the question to the police chief, how many times you guys had to call somebody, a police to city, to city hall because you had somebody that was I R A? What happened before we start putting the, the I D badge out there? What happened before that? What happened that would say, hey, look, this is what we need to do? And then when you watch the videotape, other young lady, the mayor said, ah, she didn't, she didn't resign, she quit because of all of this, all the backlash. Well, if I was the mayor, if I was the city administrator, her actions that day, I would have fired her on the spot. Because whoever trained her obviously didn't train her properly. Because her job is to meet and greet. And the, and the whole situation should have been deescalated by a simple phone call. Sir, wait one minute, and then if you want to proceed, still call the police chief, they would've came over, they would've handled it. No, but she want to go out, hold the door, and she wanted to do all this and all the back and forth. Whoever trained her need to be fired also because that's is not how you conduct yourself as a city employee, period. Now I noticed on social media, we had a couple of commissioners say she's very professional, where her actions that day, she was very unprofessional, to the point I would have fired her on the spot. That's doing the right thing. When anybody from this city wanna walk in the city hall, it's a direct reflection on us, how we do business and the atmosphere and the culture of our city. And when it don't reflect that, it tells a lot about the city. So you wonder over forty-plus years why the downtown don't have a skyscraper. You look around all the other communities, they're growing, they prosper. But we have this old clique here and this old culture here where if you're not part of the. But we have this old clique here and this old culture here where if you're not part of the clique, it's hard for you to get in. And we know the city of Apopka don't want no diversity, been on the diversity board, had the mayor as the chairperson. And we got four minorities on the board, but yet and still we vote to get rid of diversity. So what I'm saying to you guys is take a good, hard look. Because what you see, others may not see that, or they can be seeing something completely different. And I think it's about time we get on board to serve the people, the citizen of Apopka. Not us, not our self-interest, the citizen of Apopka. And once we do that, everything else will take care of itself. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand eighty-one.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
So Commissioner Blask, is your yes or no?
I'm gonna say yes.
Okay, so it's four to one, uh, with Commissioner Nest to be in, in opposition. Okay, next up, ordinance number three thousand eighty-two.
Ordinance number three thousand eighty-two. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from RSF one B residential, single-family, large lot to RFT residential two-family for property located at seventeen seventy Schiller Avenue, owned by Schiller Development LLC, comprising nine point nine-two acres more or less, providing for separability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes, Bobby? Okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not close the public hearing.
I just have a couple, and I'm sure we've seen it on social media, and just there's been concerns of, and, and Bobby, I may need just a little bit of dialogue from you here. Is that there's concerns that we're approving a project so close to our shooting range, our, our police department's shooting range. It's my understanding that they have, the, the current landowner has the rights to develop without any changes.
Correct. They have zoning of RSF one B currently, so somebody could come in here tomorrow and apply for a major development plan.
So let's say that they apply for it, even though they have the rights and we want to deny it anyways. What's that, what are the next steps? What, what does that look like for, does it just cancel that development? Or is there usually litigation involved in that capacity then? What does that look like? And that may be an attorney question as well.
I'll, I'll cut to the chase. It looks a lot like litigation and litigation that we cannot win.
Because they have the rights to develop, it's already zoned that capacity.
If, if, if they already have those rights based on the current zoning and what they're planning, I mean, they'd have to meet setbacks, they'd do all the general stuff that you do when you set up a site plan.
Sure.
But if they have upright zoning, where they don't have to come before you for a quasi judicial hearing for a rezone, and they don't need a comp plan change, then they get to do what they get to do, like building a house. Now, the house has to be within setbacks, it has to be under a certain size, it has to have certain hurricane proof, blah, 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 blah. But if it does all those things, there's nothing you can do. And under the current version of the Burt Harris Act, which is really bad for governments, they would win.
So we could, the best case scenario from what I'm hearing, uh, well, if we wanted to deny this, which that's not what I'm saying here, but if that was the goal, is we were, if we were to deny this, it would just delay this, if anything, and cost us more money, and they'd still be able to develop, and it would just cost us attorney's fees and whatever else damages possibly.
Right. And, and the weird thing about the way this works is even if they were to sell the property to somebody else, they can still pursue the lawsuit, because that's one of the changes that was happening in twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Understood. Thank you. That, that was just the highlight I wanted to have. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, I guess we're, for motion then to approve ordinance number three thousand eighty-two?
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
For clarification purposes, Chief McKellen, can I ask you a few questions regarding the shooting, the shooting range? Because I think that's the area of contention with the public, it's about the shooting range being so close to the residential, potential residential development.
Yes, ma'am.
So in regards to the safety, that's one of the things, I guess, on social media. In regards to the safety with the shooting range, is there any type of, um, I wouldn't say chance. So what are the probability of bullets shooting into the homes is what I'm seeing on, online is that we are going to potentially approve in something where it could cause potential risks to future residents. Could you kind of speak to that about the safety measures in place?
I can't predict the future. Is there always a possibility of an accidental discharge or something like that occurring? There's always that possibility. This is why during my budget presentation and during the, um, need for, um, increased impact fees, I've mentioned that, you know, we're in serious need of an indoor range. We got to get out, um, as soon as we can. There are some measures that we can take to try to mitigate that. Uh, we may have to incur a cost of building the berm up on the, um, east side of the range to mitigate anything that might happen over there or calling a specialist to see what kind of wall or structure could be built to minimize. Um, I can tell you the current berm over there is not high enough to mitigate the sound. Uh, it's going to travel over to that subdivision. I know there's already been some discussion. The initial developer plan that came before DRC had a retention pond up against the, uh, range for a little bit of distance. They've now submitted something where that retention pond, because of the drainage of the property, is now up at the front of their property. And as I said in my budget presentation, my estimates are there could be a house within two hundred and forty-two feet of our first shooting line, relane, because of that change. Now, I think, and I'll let Cliff weigh in, but I think that we can require how that property is laid out a little bit and where those ponds may be and, and some other things as it goes through the development plan. But, you know, as it's my understanding, they have their development rights, we can't do anything about it. I mean, at the end of the day, we're gonna have to look at building an indoor range and getting us, there's really nowhere in the city of Apopka anymore that you're gonna build an outdoor range. Um, we're gonna have to go indoors and make sure that the community's safe, that we can uh, do all of our training needs that we need to do on an annual basis. And the larger we get, the more that becomes and the more shooting that's going to go on in that range out there. Um, but, you know, even with the training that all of our officers have from the academy and that we train and everything else, accidents happen. Um, you know, we don't shoot to the east, we don't shoot to the west, we shoot north and south. And those berms are up to NRA standards, which is the gun range standard. Uh, we did that four or five years ago, rebuilt all them. Uh, but I have concerns about the noise because there's not a lot of height going off to the east where the subdivision is going to go. Uh, so we are probably going to have to do something to mitigate the sound leaving the range because we're going to get complaints. As I've mentioned, we are already are under restrictions where we try not to shoot only on Monday through Friday, eight to five. Uh, there are some times where we have to shoot on Saturdays. Uh, but we're not a Monday through Friday, eight to five organization. We're twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We have people that need to shoot in low light situations. Right now, we have, you know, the cooperation, shoot straight, to allow us to go in there with our night squads and do low light shooting. Uh, but, you know, they could get busy and pull that opportunity away at any time also.
Do we have an, and great questions too. Thank you for bringing that up. Is there an ability for us, or can we start planning to put a NRA certified, um, berm on the east side of the property? So you're saying you're shooting north and south exclusively, the project's to the east. Can we put a berm the length of our shooting range on the east just to ensure not only will it hopefully help some of the sound issues, mitigate that a little bit, not completely?
I'm not sure. It's something that maybe Richard and I go out there and look at. There are requirements, uh, on the pitch of the, you know, the, um, slope, I guess it's called, of the berm. I think it has to be no worse than a two to one, which increases the footprint tremendously. I think our current berm to the south is like eighteen to twenty feet deep.
Okay.
Uh, we may not have, we may lose a good portion of the range to make that footprint.
I mean, maybe we can coordinate with the developer though to say, especially if their pond is going to be that border there, maybe they'll donate a little bit of land there to make sure that safety, sound, it's mitigated, to make sure their project's successful and their residents are safe, as well as make sure that we're doing what we can there as well.
Is the developer here? Is developers here? Okay, perfect.
I mean, we can look at options also as to, I, I mean, I don't know if a cement wall would be sufficient. We can bring some people in and, you know, see what the best cost-effective way to mitigate this would be.
Okay.
Good evening. Brent Linsen with Kim Lee Horn on behalf of the owner and the applicant. Um, we've obviously put some thought into this as well, understanding the concerns and considerations. One thing that's been kind of weighing in our mind is that the gun range is in a residential community today. And there's already been complaints about the noise. Um, moving forward with the project, there's thoughts of short-term fixes such as a berm or us, we already are going to be doing a screen wall on the, the western property boundary. But do we raise the wall? Do we go from six feet to eight feet? Um, but the bigger picture thought here, knowing there is plans for an indoor facility at some point in time because it's already in a residential community. From the developer's side, we would rather contribute towards a future gun range a, as opposed to a short-term fix next door when we know you're gonna move. Is there something that this development's not coming out of the ground tomorrow? We have some time. Um, so part of the MDP approval process, working through the site plan, we're happy to work with the police chief just to understand what is a better long-term goal for the city. Instead of building a berm that's going to be there for six months, a year, let's contribute towards the final. So something we're open to.
Okay. Any, any other questions for the applicant?
No, thank you.
But we closed the public hearing, but.
But there's probably that wants to speak.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, chief.
Leroy Bell, Apopka. I've been in this city since nineteen sixty-eight. I've been on that end over there since nineteen seventy-two. Ever since that gun range been over there, is people have complained about the noise and ricochets. The chief get up here and tell you about mitigating stuff. I was a sniper for twelve years in the military. And it's one thing that he can't mitigate and it one thing that he can't promise you. And I commend you, Commissioner Anderson, for bringing this up. Once around, leave the end of a muzzle of a weapon, no one have any control of it. No one. And for him to get up here and say that to smooth this over, just to push this down the road, it's not fair. Because if there's a chance, if there's a slim chance of one ricochet killing an animal, a pet, that's one too many. Sylvester Hall have been harping on the fire department and the police department having suitable training facilities. If not, the city need to get up off the pockets and send these people to a shooting range every time they need to train. You spend money on everything else, greasing your friend's hands, moving money. You got preachers coming up here and say, oh, I like the way he moved money around. Move some money around and train so these people can have a place to train. And think about the citizen. Like I say, a bullet don't have no sense. The sense is the person that's standing behind pulling the trigger. And it seems like this won't be resolved until somebody get killed.
I remember at the last city council meeting, I wasn't present, but I watched it. And I, I listened to the words of the mayor, safety is paramount. For the safety of the employees in city hall, safety is paramount. Safety is paramount. Let that sink in for a while. So I commend the police chief for saying accident will happen. So we already went through a process where an accident happened, and it caused Mr. Duran, his son. So when we say with such smoothness, accidents can happen. Well, we don't want to be put in another situation where an accident happened that could have been prevented. Mr. Bell throw my stun about the training facilities. I'm challenging all y'all to make the training facility a reality. Not yesterday, not future years, but now. The gentleman is honest. You already got communities surrounding the, the area. So what is gonna hurt, put one more. Just increase the chances of accident will happen. But it's fine until it's your daughter, your son, or even like Mr. Bell, your pet. I watch people come in and out of these city council meetings. Once they get their agenda, they're done. They could care less whatever happened. The citizen of Apopka, we have to stop waiting till it hit us personally to care about our neighbors and what's going on in our communities. We really have to do that. And so I challenge you guys again, and, and no, I never get tired coming up here saying this because it's documented. Somewhere later, we have to pay for our decisions that we make. And that's why I try to tell my kids. Life is about choices and decisions. But there's consequences for those choices and decisions. And so I keep coming up here, time after time, to make you aware. So you can't say nobody didn't tell me, or I didn't know. Because planning ignorant to the effect don't, don't help anybody. So that's why I do it tires-ness, tireslessly to say, hey, look, we need change. And I keep saying, too many good people standing by, watching bad things happen, and not doing anything about it. It has to change at some point. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Get back to, I know we had a motion by Commissioner Smith looking for a second for ordinance number three thousand and eighty-two.
Is there any appetite for us to table this and maybe kind of have a plan presented between the city and developer? Or just the city come up with some safety measures to put in place that we are comfortable with before we move forward?
I think, um, I kind of agree with that. Right now, I just don't feel comfortable, um, voting to add additional capacity with knowing that, that gun range is there.
So I wanted, uh, the reminder, this hearing tonight is for the rezone to a district that just allows duplex compared to the dense. We're not asking for density increases with this application right now. The next step is the MDP, which would be the opportunity to form fit the plan to meet the concerns and work through those, those items.
Thank you for that information. Definitely appreciate that. I, and just from experience here that I don't like to delay any of these. So I'd like to make sure that our residents are safe and that they feel comfortable. I definitely understand, obviously, you don't want delays either, but I want to make sure that, uh, safety is paramount. So want to make sure that our residents are included in that conversation and that, um, that we take care of that. So. I want to should a table this until we get a plan back from the city staff of what we can do to ensure that there's a berm or a wall or both, uh, on the east side of that, um, shooting range.
All right. This, I, I will add to that, that although you have the development rights, there's a sense of that we have to protect the residents that are going to be future homeowners there. And, and, uh, I'm at this stage right now, even though you're asking for the rezoning, even asking for duplexes that are going to have a higher, uh, reach over the firing range, I'm concerned.
To speak to that specifically, the duplexes aren't increasing height or in terms of, you're saying, a higher range. There, it's just changing the lot lines and having a demising wall that can butt the same line. Um, but the overall density for the land will stay the same. And due to the density of the project, the MDP will come before this board as well. So it, it will, we'll have the same opportunity at that, that step as well.
Cliff, are we running into trouble even tabling this based on?
I'm never going to say never, but I think of all the things you could do that would be least risky if there's a concern and, and this is important and. And, and this is important, and if there's a way to solve the concerns that aren't going to interfere with this applicant. And the reason that's important is because, for example, and I use it as an example. You know, we, we took a little heat over here when we said, you know, you can do moratoriums, but here's why you can't do them. Or here's what's dangerous about them is you have to have a plan. You just can't say, oh, we're gonna table it and we'll think about it. You have to absolutely have a plan of action and a deadline. So if the deadline is the next meeting for staff to get with the chief and see what can be done and then get it implemented or get it so that y'all can be comfortable, that's reasonable. And while I can't speak for the developer, I would assume that they would understand that it would be frivolous to pursue anything between this meeting and the next. But if it's, well, let's talk about it for six months from now, different story.
And that's definitely not the goal at all. I, I don't want just unnecessary delays just for delay's sake. I think it's important just to make sure that we have safety for our residents and comfort level of our residents, especially the new ones that'll be on your project. So would, we can do it. I'm just trying to look at dates right now. That first meeting in December, but there's holiday next week. And are we doing a second meeting in December? I, I'm not, I'm looking at our city. Okay. So then I would move to table it till December 18th to have a, a plan come back to us from city staff to coordinate with the police department to ensure that there's some type of safety plan put into place by that meeting to be presented back with this.
Second.
Thank you.
I've been through these range developments with the sheriff's office. And you're going to need somebody that's gonna come in and tell us what's the safest option for us to do? How high that berm needs to be and other things? I don't know that you're going to accomplish it by that.
How much time do you need?
I really don't know. I mean, you know, obviously, we need to pursue it, but we got to figure out from somebody who's knowledgeable what that best, I don't know if the developer has an engineer, we can work with our engineer to determine what the safety factors are here. What's the best material to use, whether it's still a dirt berm and how much of the range we would lose if that's going to be built? Are there alternative material that may be able to be placed on the property line that should do that? I mean, there's a lot more into this than just say, let me in the developer. Because I'm not going to stand up here and tell you that I'm going to be an expert as to what's the best way to mitigate the sound and any rounds. I mean, we're never going to mitigate a round going up.
Sure. So let's do, let's still keep it with the 18th. If we're not able to accomplish what we need to by then, then we can table it again. And I don't want to just put it out, if we can get it done by the 18th, let's do that. So there's not necessary delays, but if we need to table it again, we can, we have that option.
And we will work with them and do our best. I just don't want to have a false impression here that it's a simple fix. It's not, it's not an easy fix.
And we appreciate that feedback and happy to support and partner. And just knowing the next steps in this process is moving forward with our design. There's a timeframe that needs to pass to get to the point, knowing the, the urgency of this issue. We will be coming in with our initial MDP application that will have whatever resolution to this as part of that initial submittal. We're not going to start from square one and try and work our way. We know where we're heading with this conversation.
Okay, so we got a motion by Commissioner Ness to table this item, which is ordinance number 3082 to December 18th.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Got a motion by Commissioner Ness, a second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3076.
Ordinance number 3076. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use amendment of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from residential very low suburban to mixed use for certain real property generally located south of West Kelly Park Road and west of Chandler Road. Owned by Kelly Park Property LLC, Kelly Park Road Property LLC, comprising of 45.37 acres, more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Good evening. For the record, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Applicant has submitted a small-scale future land use amendment for residential very low suburban to mixed use. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to bring the property into the transition character zone of the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code area, which permits a maximum density of 10 dwelling units per acre by right and 15 dwelling units per acre with a bonus subject to the criteria of Section R Development Bonuses and TDRs of Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code. Total site area is 45.37 acres and is located at 2584 West Kelly Park Road. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment not only to bring it into the transition character zone of the Kelly Park area, but to propose a development consisting of a non-residential tract adjacent to Kelly Park Road and a development consisting of 250 townhomes, which are not permitted under the current future land use designation. It's only residential very low suburban, which permits a maximum density of two units per acre. Orange County Public Schools has indicated that the capacity is not available at the high school level and is deficient by 28.250 seats. The Development Review Committee recommends approval on the November 12th meeting. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. The recommended motion this evening is accept first reading of ordinance number 3076 and hold it over for a second reading and adoption. Myself and the applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions for Bobby on this matter?
I just had a quick question. It's one that we discussed on this project and the one that's to the east that I think we approved last week, or excuse me, last meeting. It's Chandler Road. That one, is there, so it's, that's a privately owned road. That's kind of two different parcel owners there, or maybe three, that actually own the road itself. So it's real estate, it's not a road. So technically speaking, if these developers wanted to get rid of that road completely, that would be possible as it's a private road.
That would be possible, but I think the property owner to the east has plans to dedicate some right-of-way in the future for Chandler Road, is my understanding.
Okay, so that, the goal is to continue to have that as an access road or a functioning road?
As far as I understand, yes.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Any other questions for Bobby? Anybody from the city want to weigh in? Anybody from the public?
Yep.
Dr. O, having been an educator all my life and looking at the number of ones we're building out on that end, Kelly Park Road. I look at, we're short space, we're short high school rooms, don't have the seats. And our friend that normally sits in the back isn't here to complain. But we also don't have anybody from the school board to talk. We don't have principals here. We don't have our school board rep here. This is great concern. Where are they going to put them? You got a former teacher up here on the, on our board here. Mr. Smith and I used to teach at the same time together. And he knows what it's like to have a full class in one tractor. I had 60 kids in a classroom in one tractor and one bandsaw. And we had a whole yard full of portables out there. It's unfair to the students and it's unfair to the teachers. And it's extremely unsafe. And then that's where you get violence. And we say, why is New York so unsafe? Why is Chicago so unsafe? Why is the violence picking up in Orlando? And I was just reading online, why is Apopka getting so unsafe? And when you compress a lot of people with a lot of hormones together in one place, that's why it gets unsafe. And you have a school that's overflowing with people, then that's when it gets unsafe. And that's why subdivisions that are overcrowded are unsafe. So I'm highly suggesting that if you get these subdivisions that are overrunning the schools, that we talk with the schools first before approving them, because we have to have a place for the kids to go. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this one? All right, if not, we close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 3076 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
Is that 370? Okay, I see one is rezoning and this one is a small scale. This is just rezoning, right? This one is.
Future, yeah, future land use.
Future land use, and that's part of the KPI.
So, got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3077.
Ordinance number 3077. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from residential single-family estate, RSF 1A, to KPI MU, Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, with an assignment of transition overlay for certain real property generally located south of West Kelly Park Road and west of Chandler Road. Owned by Kelly Park Road Property LLC, comprising 45.37 acres, more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective.
For the record, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. This is the companion rezoning ordinance to the small-scale future land use amendment that was just approved by the city council. This is the master plan that is proposed, 250 townhomes, the non-residential tract located on the northern part adjacent to Kelly Park Road. There is proposal to have access via Kelly Park Road. There will be a dedication of a 30-foot wide strip of right-of-way along Kelly Park Road. That'll be a reservation for future right-of-way. Within that strip, there'll be the 12-foot wide bicycle trail that will help with the linkages for the pedestrian, or not the pedestrian, but for the multimodal type, not multimodal, but the multi-use trail connections within the Kelly Park area as well as that we've been doing with each development that's come in within the Kelly Park area. Roadway and pedestrian connections will be provided to allow cross-access to the properties to the west and east at such time they're developed. In accordance with requirements of the Form-Based Code, 15% of the total site will remain as open space. And you can see open space areas detailed on the master plan. Common recreational elements include a community swimming pool, green space with an internal trail system, passive open space recreation, and the dedication of the bike trail along Kelly Park Road. Orange County Public Schools has indicated capacity is not available for this rezoning and is deficient by 28.250 seats and is deficient at the high school level. The Development Review Committee unanimously recommends approval. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval last Tuesday evening. And the recommended motion this evening is accept first reading ordinance number 3077 and hold it over for second reading and adoption. Myself and the applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Bobby?
When I did the agenda review yesterday, we talked about a right-hand turn. Is that coming with this?
No.
No?
This is the rezoning right now. This is the approval of the rezoning. You just approved the future land use amendment. So the rezoning is a quasi-judicial public hearing. So this is basically approval of the master plan and the zoning on the property to allow the 250 townhomes and the non-residential area. The turn lane, as we discussed and I discussed with all the commissioners in the briefing, that's a variance request that would be going forward to the Planning Commission. It won't be coming to the city council unless the Planning Commission denies it. The applicant would then have the ability to appeal to the city council, but that's a separate matter altogether.
So if the planning and zoning approves the variance, it wouldn't come to the city council?
It would not.
Is there something that we can, if we move forward, that we would ask them to, to make sure that there is a right-hand turn?
They're requesting the variance for the deferral of the right turn lane until right-of-way is there. It's under DRC review right now, and so they have the process to go through. But right now, we're at the rezoning stage. So whenever somebody comes in with a development plan, they have to follow XYZ requirements of the code. As Mr. Shepherd was saying on the Sheila Road case setbacks, things like that, turn lanes would be one of those. But those would be open for variance that goes to the Planning Commission. Like I said, it would come back to this board if it was denied by the Planning Commission. The applicant could appeal that.
I guess in Commissioner Velazquez, you may be, I don't know if this was your exact question, but can we require it now as part of our approval? Can we say it needs to happen?
No.
No. Okay.
Any other questions for Bobby or the, why don't we have the applicant come up just so we get them on the record that, that the right turn lane will not be a problem?
John Adams, RJ Witten Associates, 8 Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida, 34741. I'm actually going to have our engineer speak to this. He's been filing an application, it's Brian Ashby.
Good evening, Brian Ashby, Kimley Horn. Yes, so to speak on the right turn lane, and again, this is for the rezoning only, but I know there was a question on the right turn lane. The, the entrance, we worked with staff on kind of the location of the entrance. We have the Toll Brothers project to the north of us, and that kind of defines where we can put kind of our entrance because of their left turn lane in the center of Kelly Park Road. Actually, as part of Kimley Horn, we, we are assisting the city with looking at the full, full widening of Kelly Park Road. So we're working with city staff on our, with our transportation staff on, on that. As far as this development is concerned, we were not opposed to a right turn lane and have not been. However, when, when we take a look at how much right-of-way is currently available within Kelly Park Road, it would push the right turn lane into our adjacent property owners. And we do not have development rights within their, within their properties. And so that is where the variance has come from. It's more of a deferral of the right turn lane. The left turn lane, that is, that is also, we are, we will be putting on a left end. It's the right end that we're asking the variance for just because we cannot fit it in due to the insufficient right-of-way along Kelly Park Road.
You could try to work your, the access road though, on the east side versus the west side to try to get that in. Our concern, at least my concern, that I've always had, especially on Kelly Park, on, on multiple of these projects, is that we don't have enough space on a 45 mile an hour road for people to properly slow down, turn into all these new developments that are coming in. So it's definitely a safety concern and there's definitely going to be accidents there. And I think that's the, we want people to be able to safely get out of the traveling lanes, be able to turn into your project with 250 homes, 250-plus cars, things like that, buses, things like that as well. So it's definitely a concern, but that's not our decision yet. But it's definitely, I think, a huge concern of ours. At least mine. I won't say for anybody else, for me.
Understood.
It, it was for me because I just feel as we continue to develop this area, if someone wants to make a right-hand turn and needs to stop in the middle of traffic to turn, to make the right-hand turn, it just creates a problem.
Again, we, we, we don't not want to build a right-hand turn. There is just insufficient right-of-way adjacent to our property to be able to fit a right-hand turn. We looked at pushing the entry over to the east further, and then we don't meet intersection spacing with Chandler Road. And we also, if, again, there is the development that is just to our northeast. We can only push the, the, the entry so far over before we impact their right turn lane. And that's about 80, or their left turn lane, that's about 80 feet. And if we did that, then you'd have, I believe the appropriate terminology is a bidirectional left. So opposing lefts in both directions. There's another term that I won't use that, that is historically what they've been called. And so we would be pushed into a scenario where you would have folks trying to make left-hand turns going in opposite directions using the same lane. And so this, in working, you know, again, through this master plan with staff, is, appeared to be the best location for this entrance, especially knowing that there are future widening plans for Kelly Park Road and that the right turn lane could be constructed when Kelly Park Road, the right-of-way is available. And that right turn lane can be constructed with the sufficient right-of-way to actually get traffic in and out.
So who would be providing the right-hand lane turn at the expansion of the Kelly Park?
It would be during the expansion of the Kelly, of Kelly Park Road. Correct.
So how does that work if it's, if it's not? You understand?
Yeah, no, I understand. You, you, I mean, I, I think he's made a commitment. If, if there's a way to make this happen, that he will give us a right turn lane. I, I, you know, at this point, I don't, I don't know that we can, you know, until we get the right-of-way, it's, it's kind of a mute point.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I, I think we, you know, we've got him on record as saying he was, he's.
So have those property owners been contacting reference to selling the right-of-way?
Hello, I'm sorry, what was your question, sir? I'm Jonathan Bell with INB Homes. I'm with the developer.
Okay.
So I, I thought I'd come on the record and just say that, yes, we don't have a problem with a right turn lane at all. Yeah, yeah, that would be an easy thing for us to do. The problem is the right turn lane, about 160 feet of it sits in our. The problem is, the right turn lane, about a hundred and sixty feet of it sits on our neighbor's property, and the neighbor won't sell us the property. We've tried to buy it, so it's not an option. And then we also had some new news this week where the traffic engineer, we have a TIA Traffic Impact Assessment Study completed. We found out that our residential development, which is the part that we're doing, the townhomes, does not have enough trip counts to trip requiring a right turn lane. It's the commercial part on the front of the property that's going to require the right turn lane. That's what's causing the trigger of a right turn lane. So our development, really, we've got a new TIA being created right now, it'll be finished in this week, that shows that the right turn lane is not even needed for the residential development, but it will be needed later for the commercial part of the project. But we'll be glad to help out in any way we can on that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
I saw these coming up, that they're right out there in the same area, and the same thing about the schools. You're adding school, approving school after school after school to be not built. The children are not gonna get educated. They don't have a building to go to. If you pack them in like sardines, they're not going to have teachers. They're not going to have classrooms. Your children, the children of the city, are not going to have a good education. Taxes are gonna go up for schools, and we don't have teachers coming out of the colleges to teach them. Where are they gonna go? Who's going to teach them? Where are the baseball fields? Where are the gymnasiums? Where are the books? There's nowhere for them to go, and you keep approving and saying, who's going to make the motion? And sit there and wait? Who's gonna second this? Who's gonna say aye? It doesn't make sense. Tax dollars, tax dollars, tax dollars. And in the meantime, your kids don't get an education because there's no place to shove them in a building that doesn't exist. And the county is telling you that. Absolutely ludicrous.
This is the school capacity.
Every two weeks, you approve more and more, and you don't see the impact on the kids' future. And I think they just said we were forty-seventh in our kids' education right now. Forty-seventh. And Apopka's gonna be fiftieth in everything if we keep this up.
Anybody else?
Leroy Bell, just a couple of questions. This subdivision, these two hundred and some houses that are going in, have you thought about the kids that are gonna be in there? They're gonna, they're gonna wanna go to the soccer field? They're gonna wanna go to the baseball diamonds and stuff? Have you thought about, you already got a problem up at the amphitheater up there with soccer field? Ain't, you, you already got a problem with residents rent this field and that field, trying to put more fields in? Do that, do that factor in, in any kind of way? What? And, and, and we got people sitting on the city council that ran to go every time you open your mouth.
So moved.
Have anybody put any thought into this? Have anybody put any thought into it at all?
Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to just address some of the public comments. Once again, John Adams, RJ Witten Associates. One of the ones I wanted to speak to is the school. Our client's actively working with the school board. They're required to work with the school board in the school district. They're committed to paying school impact fees to help allocate future school stations, as well as improvements to existing facilities and new facilities. As far as some of the network and transportation, this is in your transition zone for the Kelly Park Interchange District. To the west of us is actually the Village Center. To the east of us is Neighborhood. Additionally, to the Kelly Park Road widening, we've provided future stubouts to the west, east, and south for interconnectivity, to not force all of that traffic onto Kelly Park Road. So when those parcels do develop in all those different directions, there'll be that interconnectivity in all of our cross-sections with our roads. There's adequate sidewalks and urban sections. For pedestrians, there's also bike lanes to encourage other modes of transportation as well throughout this development.
Thank you. All right.
And Marilyn, just say that in reference to the schools and, and I, and I agree with Dr. Owen, she was talking about the old capacity, because I, I've talked to our school board member, and she understands where we are. But we also understand that unless schools get to a certain percentage over the capacity, we cannot get a new school. And so if we don't approve projects so we can get to that point, that means the kids that are already in an overcrowded school will remain in overcrowded school because we won't have enough overcapacity in order to generate having that new school. And we've already been told that there's already a new high school site that's being looked at, and hopefully that we'll be able to move that project up just as we did previously with the K eight school. So it's not that, I'm not concerned about overcrowding because I've been there where, you know, you hoped that somebody was absent, so you had enough seats for students to sit in. But until, and that's not a, any control that we have, this is a state law that says it has to be a certain percentage overcrowded before we can get to that next level. And so that's where we are.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Smith? All right, back to the ordinance, looking for motion to approve ordinance number three thousand seventy seven, first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh three.
Resolution twenty twenty-five oh three. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, providing for a budget amendment.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Resolution number twenty twenty-five oh three, budget amendment number three, in the amount of two million, two, twenty-three thousand nine hundred and one dollars. We have two items. The first one is for a utility upsizing agreement with Emerson Point to reimburse M and I Homes of Orlando for material-only costs for upsizing the pipes from, I think, six inches to twenty-four inches. This is an agreement that we have, and they've completed the project in the amount of one million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand eight seventy-two, and we want to move forward with reimbursing them. So we need to incorporate it in the budget. The second item, these are just some rollover funds for grant-funded projects that are underway, and we're moving them forward so those projects can continue. And the projects are for the CDBG sidewalk, Phase Two primarily, the Lanza Williams Expansion Project, and the Affordable Housing Project, CDBG. Okay? In the amount of eight hundred ninety-one thousand twenty-nine dollars.
Any questions for Blanche? Anybody from the public wish to speak?
Leroy Bell, the affordable houses, the affordable houses, money, what, what, what affordable houses are that money for?
It was the four homes that were selected for either rebuild or, it was like four, right, Bradley?
Five.
It was four? Oh, okay. So, so, so that would have been the house, that would have been the house on Washington, eighth, two-house zone, Eighth Street, on, on the east end, west end, Washington, and I believe the other house was somewhere up north. So this, this money, I, I, well, I spoke with the gentleman on the house on Washington, and it was said that he signed the papers for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, he thought, to have his house redid. Now, this guy, his home is finna be demolished all the way down and built back smaller than what he had. That's Martell Ivory. Then you got Roscoe Griffin, his house is gonna be demolished and brought back, no problem. But the house that you have on west, on, on west Eighth Street, that you're finna put all this money in, they just put a brand-new roof on this house. They just remodeled this house. This house just need paint. Matter of fact, it don't need paint. It need the stuff that you spray to get the mildew off the walls. The one down, the one down, uh, uh, on east Eighth Street, it's a blockhouse. It's a blockhouse that looks pristine. Uh, myself and Sylvester Hall, we went out and took a look at these houses. I, I don't, I don't understand. When we do, we truly do have houses that need to be. Now, we looked at the board of the people that selected the houses, and one of the guys on the board, a couple of guys on the board, we spoke to, and they said, no, we didn't select no houses. Didn't nobody tell us. Sylvester can speak more to it than I can. This, to me, this, make this make sense. All you have to do is look at the addresses. Don't take my word for it 'cause I could be lying to you. Don't take my word for it. I understand Martell Ivory House. I understand Roscoe Griffin House. It's more suitable houses to be redid. I'm talking about elderly people. You have people like Darrell, you have people like, uh, 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 Mr. McCray, you have, uh, uh, Roger Becker. These guys is the ones that own the paperwork saying that they are the selectees. They select the people for this project. And they don't know nothing about this.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak?
Sylvester Hall of Apopka, quick question on the fifth house. When are we gonna make that determination, the alternate home? When are we gonna make the determination whether we're gonna fix that house or not, rebuild it or? Because we left it as the ultimate. We're supposed to go back and get the figures. So is that's gonna be a house that's gonna be included?
At this time, at this time, we don't have the funding for the fifth home. But I mean, upon completion of the other homes and the contingency funds are not used, we may have additional funding. But at this time, we don't have the funding.
As Leroy pointed out, we did go look at the homes. I went, we went together. I went personally to each one of the homes. To my surprise, I won't mention the name, but the gentleman don't even have a floor plan, what the home is gonna be rebuilt, what it's gonna look like. And so about three years ago, I came to this podium, and I said, my goal is to go back and rebuild every poverty-stricken community, starting with South Apopka, bring love and prosperity. We got the chance with this grant to improve the city of Apopka. Whether you agree with the grant or disagree with the grant, that's fine, but the money is there. So as leaders of the community, how we put our best foot forward into beautify this city, 'cause that's what we want. We tearing down homes, and we put the residents in a uncompromising position because you should be happy that you're getting some. But I'm looking at two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for one house. And then I, I agree that the homes that are on Eighth Street, two of them, both of them are block homes, and like Leroy said, one of them has a brand-new roof on it. Well, I spoke to one of the commissioners after one of the city council meeting. I said, hey, look, I could be boo-boo the fool, but I watch flip this house all the time. Fifty-fifty. There's just so many of them out there, and it's just entertaining to watch how they turn a limit into a, a, a paradise with fifty thousand dollars. What depending on the situation, the overall condition of the home. So I go and look at some of these homes, and I, I agree, two of them need to be dismantled, demolished, and started new. So when we start new, remember, we're trying to beautify the city of Apopka. If you, my ideal of seeing my community, three bedrooms, two baths, two-car garage, that's what I wanna see in my community. I wanna see people living life, not building some homes that's gonna keep the community in poverty and keep a whole area designated when we talk about crime and everything else. Let's beautify the city when we got free money to do it. And so these homes that we're building, none of them have the layout of what was gonna be built. And to my knowledge, it's two bedrooms, one bath, and a car porch. Not even a car garage, a car porch. So I asked a couple of guys who's in real estate, a three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, what are you looking at? That two hundred and thirty-eight thousand would easily do that because we're not building it retail, we're building it wholesale. You guys know when you build it, then you sell it retail. You're gonna jack it up another hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars depending on what you got. So please use these funds a little bit better. And if I could request the records for all the administrative and all things that have been done with this grant.
All right, anybody else from the public wish to speak on this one? All right. Look for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh three.
The contracts have been awarded on this.
Right.
Just so you know. This is just moving the money to continue the project. Everything has already come to council, the contracts, and the contract awards. It's already been approved.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Anderson? Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
What's the, are we able to get an update on that project?
Yeah, we can.
And just get some real hard numbers to make sure where the numbers are at?
Yeah, definitely. And actually, one of the homes were changed from a two-one to a three-two with the same money. So that was a change order that we just did.
For the same money?
Yeah, it was, it worked. I can't, I don't know exactly which homeowner.
So are we, did we overinflate before, or are we underestimating now?
I just wanted to share that, but Bradley knows the details behind it.
I mean, adding a bathroom is not achieved.
I'll let him. He has, I'm sorry, Mayor, I just trying to.
Bradley Williams Parks Recreation Director. We, we can certainly put an update together for you and share with the council. The change order was from a two-two to a three-two. Uh, the change order was from a two-two to a three-two.
So these weren't two-ones, they were two-twos?
Two-twos, two-two to a three-two.
And then if you could send everybody the list of, um, the, all the people that applied and then just so we, they've got that list and how, then the selection committee and then how they came up with that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
With all the math behind it too. All the dollar melts, thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Alright, city council reports, Commissioner Anderson, why don't you get us started?
Yes, so, good evening, I had the pleasure to attend Dream Lake Elementary teaching, um, teaching, uh, the third grade classes and, um, I want to thank Dream Lake for the opportunity and I look forward to continue next year, more schools and, um, that's actually all I have. Another thing is I'm having next Wednesday, a Thanksgiving turkey giveaway. The location is to be determined, I'll have that by tomorrow, so please just check my Facebook page, um, for the location. And that's all I have, thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Blaskas?
Uh, well, we did the Lake Apocrypha Natural Gas District. When, um, when I attended the, uh, the awarding of the grant, it was for a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And their mission was a top priority for Lake Apocrypha Natural Gas District is customer safety, but this, I'm trying to find just what the, oh, here it was, prioritizing, the grant was, the proposed project is in a disadvantaged area in the Lake Apocrypha Natural Gas Service Area. The placement of the natural gas pipelines will also increase the potential for additional development in this disadvantaged communities due to the safety benefits of new modern gas infrastructure. So, um, and the Lake Apocrypha Natural Gas District Pipeline Replacement Program Grant Request is designed with a strong emphasis on benefiting the disadvantaged communities. So that was the grant that was awarded at the Lake Apocrypha. And it was at that time that there was a discussion that I learned that, uh, our former vice mayor had, had resigned and retired. There was never any mention about anyone being interested in the in, in the vacancy. And we were unaware of it, I only, we all learned of his retirement at that presentation, right? Um, so just wanted to put that.
What's that, so the grant is to the city of Apocrypha?
No, Lake Apocrypha Natural.
It's a.
From the city?
No, it's from federal government.
It's from the federal government.
So why were you there?
We always there.
Uh, because Lake Apocrypha is part of, uh, we, we have two shares, we.
Okay, so it's, the Lake Apocrypha is receiving that grant to, for areas that need it.
It's going to benefit the, if I'm not mistaken, the south side of Apocrypha.
Yeah, the underserved.
Underserved community on the south side of Apocrypha.
Okay, thank you.
To make the, um, energy much more affordable for them.
Got you, okay.
I think we're all actually, I think we're all actually, the invitation went out to all of us, right? I think we're all was invited.
Um, of course, then we all, I think most of us attended the memorial stone rededication over at the Apocrypha Middle School and I don't know, Mr. John Clorin is gone. I want to extend a thank you to him, he actually did that. One of the things that I wanted to talk about was I have a few things here. Okay. On social media today, there was a post regarding they're repairing, they're repairing water meters. My guy said they were subcontracted in and scheduled to repair about three thousand two hundred of the new water meters. And, uh, it goes on. And then someone shared a link to our website. And there I found on November eleventh, there is a notice to the residents, water meter maintenance. And there is, let me put it here, I think there's twenty-one residential communities that are affected. Uh, we were not aware of that, I mean, were you aware, uh, this was posted on our website, November eleven. So we are actually having a subcontractor out there to address the six thousand water meters that are not functioning.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so.
It's, it's, yeah, it's city staff as well subcontractors.
Okay, so, uh, the point I'm trying to make is, this is where I constantly find out when we're doing something. It's on social media. We were never, just out of courtesy, I keep asking the same thing. Just out of courtesy, if they would just send a notice or just bring us up to date. You put the notice on the website. I don't always go to our city website for everything. But I went out to, the social media actually was what informed me that we had somebody out there. Do we know who the subcontractor is?
I don't have the details with me right here right now. I don't have the details with me right here right now. Blanche probably does. Corin Maine, yeah.
Would you send us that information?
This is public service that is, um, handling that, so we can get them to gather some information. Um, and get it, and get it to you, but.
What, because remember when they started doing the fiber optics, we were unaware of it? I mean, we saw all the orange rolls going around the entire city. But when the residents are having issues, who are they calling?
Uh, what, probably calling public service, probably calling you, probably.
All of us individually. So, um, it was just out of courtesy if they can just send us, uh, some information that we now have a subcontract, a subcontractor out there and we're starting to address some of those meters. Because what happens is now you have the social media posts and now everyone's jumping in and expressing some issues and, um, and then what happens is they start to contact us to kind of resolve some of those problems that they may be, or concerns.
I understand.
That was one of the things that I just wanted to bring up.
Can, and man, just jump in here too, so on the website says Aqua Water, is that the vendor?
I think Aqua Water is a part of the process, but I think they're more on the technology side. But I believe it's Corin Maine.
Okay, we don't have that on the website, so that would be helpful. And then how did you guys decide? The subdivisions you listed here, how were those selected?
Um, I'd rather get with, um, public service.
Okay.
And get the information from them. I don't want to speak out of turn or say something that's incorrect. So, we did coordinate with them, but let me get the information from them and get, make sure I know that Aqua is a part of it, but we talk to them more on the technology side. I don't know if they're out, the ones that are actually out there in the field. I know we get meters from Corin Maine, I thought Corin Maine was helping with that effort. So, but I, we'll get the details for you. Cause it's all really on the public service side, we just have to deal with the data when it comes back.
Understood. Sorry about that, Commissioner Blaskas.
Um, the other issue on, you know, the other thing that again that I learned, where I actually got an email from uh, Pastor Shortz, where he wrote to each of the commissioners regarding, I guess, our mayor stepping down from.
I did.
You did step down?
I did not.
Oh, you did not? Oh, okay, he put he has not resigned, I'm sorry.
So, social media is not always correct.
No, it isn't, but, uh, some have heard that the mayor was resigning from the board. It has been discussed that the mayor is in full support of this effort and does not want those who have aught with him using that against the effort. I, I, that one I wanted some, a little clarity, like.
There's no clarity, I haven't resigned from the board.
Okay, so the other board members and the mayor have a great relationship, he has not asked to resign, okay. Um, and now he's asking to have a meeting with each of the commissioners and I believe the next meeting for next step is December twelfth, so he's asking.
I don't, I think they're going to put it off till January. I don't think we're having a meeting until after January.
Okay, cause I just got the letter November nineteenth yesterday.
Okay, well, okay then, okay.
So you did not resign?
No.
Okay. Um, okay, so he's asking, so that was the only thing that kind of, you know, like, uh, he said those who aught with him using against the effort and then said the board members are in the process of setting up meetings with the city commissioners to be sure there is a full buy-in and to allow each commissioner to voice any particular concern they may have. Okay, so you're saying they're putting the meeting off till?
Well, I mean, they might be, if they're meeting with you, then that, that, they could be meeting with you.
Well, here he said the next board meeting is, uh, December twelfth. The second, the second email I received from him today.
I don't know, I'll, I'll, I'll confirm everything tomorrow. I don't know.
And what's that, I guess in that email too, it says that we have full buy-in, what's the buy-in they're looking for?
I, I don't know.
But you're on the board.
I know I am.
So, yeah, I don't, yeah, I didn't understand what.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it, uh, cleared up.
Okay, I've received a few, two emails and we're back, I'm going to go back to the public comment. There is a concern, this is now, the motions have been made, of course, on the initial date when we found out that the co, uh, public comment was moved and we were unaware of it, no consultation, and it was voted three-two at that time, which was August seventh. Then, uh, Commissioner Nesta made the motion again on August twenty-first, resulted in the same three-two. And recently, uh, which was the last council meeting, November sixth, it resulted in the same thing. And since then, I've gotten two, probably three emails and a phone call. And the one thing that I believe that I'm kind of being, um, asked is that we put out the motion, I second it, and then it goes down the line where it's nay-nay, three-two, and we move on. Um, what the public wants to know is what's the persistent in denying and voting it down? They want to know why. And we, I just feel, and I keep saying this, I'm consistent in the fact that I believe the public has a right to have a public comment session within our council meeting. Not at the end when you turn the light feet off and it denies even the public from tuning in. We all signed up for it, we signed up for the criticisms, we sign up for whether they want to praise us. Um, we cannot choose when it's right for them to have a voice. And, um, Commissioner Nesta makes the motion, I second, it gets shut down with three-two and we just move on and there's never an explanation. I'm being, I'm being asked to ask our council for an explanation. So, I.
You asking me?
Yeah.
I'm not sure how to answer that question.
So if I make a motion now to bring the public comments back.
Right, and you get a second.
And I get a second, can there be a discussion?
Well, there can be a discussion, um, I, I've, I've been asked this question. Any one of you can make a motion, as long as it's not an out of order motion, which would be something beyond anything that we're talking about. And if it gets a second, it's on the floor for discussion. It's not a sunshine issue because you don't have to have any agenda. It's the best practice, everybody does it, but it's not a legal requirement for sunshine law, so you can do that. Um, what is the purpose of redoing it? That's a more of a political than it is a legal question. There is a mechanism by which if you, somebody said, well, I'm tired of this. We've been done it, we've done it, we've done it. Can we make our own resolution or some sort of a procedure that says after motion has been brought up and failed, you know, X number of times or even one time for the same thing, that it can't be brought up again for some period of time y'all defined? That would be a procedural thing that y'all could impose if you chose to do that, you don't have that now. Um, so you could do that, but in terms of whether you can keep bringing it up if it gets a second and it keeps getting voted down, right now, there's no, no rules that stop you from doing it. Part of the reason is, um, we do not and never have, or nor are we required to follow Robert's rules strictly as written. And because of that, and by the way, for what it's worth, I think that's a good thing, because other, in a lot of other areas, Robert's rules is a real pain. But nevertheless, that's why. So yes, you can do it, if you get a second, it's on the floor, have at it.
Alright, so then I'll make a motion to reinstate the public comment session within our council meeting and I, I, I believe the last time I said it can follow presentations or it can follow the business items, but I would like to see the public comment session come back so that at least our public has an, uh, uh, an opportunity to have their voice heard beyond the YouTube and have our public also have access to the public comment session.
You got a motion by Commissioner Blaskas?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
That was the point of this.
Yeah.
So, as always in, in Commissioner Blaskas, obviously, I've been in support of this, this is something that wasn't done by, actually, any of the decision of this council. It was moved and then we've always asked it to be moved back, it was never properly moved or voted on to be moved from the beginning. So, it was unilaterally moved in the beginning, we've always worked to put it back, but it was never properly moved to the end to begin with. So, we can vote all we want, but it's never been moved properly to begin with and to your point, I've had communications with residents as well that do want to hear from the other commissioners of why are they voting the way that they are?
Okay, you got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
So there's not going to be a discussion?
All in favor?
No, what do you mean?
Are you in favor?
Of what?
The motion you just made.
Yes, I'm in favor of having the motion. But I wanted a discussion, I mean, do we have?
All opposed?
No, I'm not going to go forward with the, he's trying to shut it down and I feel like there should be a discussion. The, and I shouldn't say he, the chair is trying to shut it down. I don't, because I.
I don't know, I'm, I'm not sure what the vote is.
I'm, I'm neither am I, because I feel like the chair is shutting it down and not allowing any discussion.
Oh, um, okay, well, the, I guess there is a legitimate question about public participation here. And so, to the extent, the, this is a procedural thing for council. But you could open the floor to public comment if you chose to, this is not one of those items where it would otherwise be required, but you can. Um, but, I, again, if I'm counting votes, I thought I might have gotten to the point of hearing three votes.
No, um, no, he said you, I, and I didn't.
That would have been approving your.
No, so I'm withdrawing my I. Because what I really was looking for was some discussion.
Okay.
Because we keep getting.
Commissioner Blaskas, poll it, poll your members, poll your, your serving members.
We got a motion and we got a second.
What they would like to.
We got a motion and a second.
So do we open this up for public comment?
You can, yes you can.
Okay, so I would like to open it up for public comment.
We're, we're in the, the council report.
And it's her council report that she can do as she pleases.
Now, I'm asking the attorney for guidance, he says, I can open this up for public.
As a body, you can discernment to open it for public comment, yes, and the, the mayor is, is the chair of the meeting.
I think it's, I think it's important to finally address this.
We, we have, we've addressed it three times.
No, we, it, it's been shut down.
Nobody's ever shut this down, nobody shut it down. We've, we've had discussion at, 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 at the council level and.
I don't remember a discussion.
Commissioner Nesta discussed it.
That's not a discussion, I spoke. There's a difference.
I don't know if there was a discussion.
So Commissioner Smith, do you have any feedback on why you vote the way that you do?
I have none.
Okay.
Commissioner Anderson?
My position hasn't changed when the first discussion, I explained in the initial, when I voted in the initial time and, um, it hasn't changed.
Okay, so we got a motion and a sec, or well, I guess we didn't have a second, so we'll, okay, motion fails for lack of a second. Okay, Commissioner Blaskas, anything else?
Yes, one more thing, I tried with the public comment. The city charter, that was another inquiry, if we can put this on, whether it's the next council meeting to kind of discuss, you had done this.
As a ca, as a charter amendment? As a ca- as a charter amendment?
Right.
Absolutely could.
Okay. So, that's another thing, and um, that's it.
Do we need to vote on that to get on the?
Do we have to vote on that for the city charter to have it on the next?
You, you, I don't know the procedure by which you put things on the agenda, but I think the answer is that you come through, do you say come through the your office or directly through the mayor? But yeah, you, however you would ordinarily put an item on the agenda, you could put it on the agenda. And then, if someone says, okay, now Shepard draft the amendment, I'll draft it, it's not a problem, it's easy.
Well, you did present some city charter. Okay, so it can come on the next uh city council meeting?
Absolutely. I, I don't control the agenda, but yes.
Okay.
Well, I think when we bring up all the, the, the charter amendments is when the, when we'd wanna do it. I don't think we wanna do it.
Yeah, what, there, there, I, I don't know that we even had the. So, if, even if he had the first reading of what's already there, at that time, you could say, we want for the second reading, you to add this other amendment.
Yeah.
No problem, it's easy.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith?
So what have we put on the agenda?
Nothing, for now. We're, we're gonna wait till we get ready to, I think we're gonna bring all the, the, the. Charter amendments forward and it will put that as a discussion item to talk about putting that on the uh.
Well, we had done all proposed changes already.
Well, we, we never, we never agreed to.
So are we gonna start over again, or we're just gonna use the ones that we had already worked on?
That, that's an ordinance prepared with everything that's already been worked on. It's just a question of when it's gonna be called in for a, for a first reading, second reading. I'm sorry.
Why don't we do that next meeting then?
That's, again, that's an agenda's issue, and if that's when you want it on the agenda, it's, it, the document is prepared. So that's up to y'all as to when you bring it forward.
For all of the, for all the charter amendments.
Yeah, 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 okay. You wanna add this n- new thing to it? No problem. It's, it's not a hard draft.
Sure.
Okay.
So it's gonna be a first reading of the charter.
The, all of them, yes, correct.
At the next meeting.
The next, we can do it next meeting, sure. Okay. I guess question, and we, and we can also bring up then when it would be, when that um. That election would be as well.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else, Commissioner Smith?
As uh Commissioner Vasquez uh alluded to earlier, the Lake Popka National Gas Board did receive that uh grant. Uh, to improve the infrastructure of the gas lines in the uh underhobbled areas of, of Lake Popka. And um so, the, the money's not in hand, it's like a reimbursement procedure. They get reimbursed, but it's gonna be a, a great improvement in safety uh in that community, so uh well received grant. Uh, I did a turkey giveaway today, you know, in conjunction with another company uh this afternoon. And we'll be doing another one uh in partnership with the uh Leach Law Firm on Tuesday. At one o'clock at the Billardine Community Center.
Okay, Commissioner Nesta?
Thank you. The uh, just a reminder, I have office hours every Thursday, eleven to one, open to anybody and everybody that wants to. Usually dedicate about thirty minutes per person to come in and discuss uh whatever they want, whatever improves the community, I'm open to having the conversations and. Again, every Thursday, it's been going very well, getting new people that I normally wouldn't meet with or just haven't been able to be introduced to and. It's nice for them to be able to come to City Hall and, and have somebody to speak in that capacity, just in an open forum like that. So, just a reminder, office hours. Every Thursday, eleven to one, obviously not next week for Thanksgiving, but uh tomorrow I will be there. Uh, the next discussion, and, and I'm gonna have a motion at the end of this, is I wanna discuss interim fire Department Chief Sanchez. He's done some incredible work since being in this position. Uh, he's increased department morale, which has helped our. Department just be able to move on as a whole. There's been a lot of transition within the department and be able to. Move together and serve our residents in such a better way. So, they've had such increased department morale, he is an increased that he's. Been able to get our union contract across the line, which has been great for him as well, and great for our. Department again, to be able to move forward and start to really focus on a jobs, focus on training, focus on servicing our residents, which is, is the goal. We're all here to serve our residents. And it's gotten better and better with him at the helm. And uh he's been consistently setting goals for the future, being sure that. We are a progressive department, that it's, uh, we're continually to move forward and not backwards, that we're not just doing the old things, that we're continuing to do new and listening to. The um, our, our, our firefighters and fire uh department head. So, um, I wanna make the motion that we. Take interim off of Fire Chief Sanchez and make him our full-time fire chief.
So, I, I will say that was a discussion yesterday I had with um, um. Our chief administrator, um, and if, if this is a way that we can.
No, that's not the way you do it. So I, I have to make that, I have to make that determination.
And that's fine, I still motioned it, it's, I wanna show a, a sign of confidence in our newly. Uh interim fire department head and chief, and that he's doing an incredible job, and the morale in our department is doing absolutely incredible now, so it's a sign of. Excuse me?
Couldn't agree with you more.
Why I have a motion, so.
I mean, I would. But I, I know we can't do this officially this way, but I certainly do agree with. The um recommendation that Commissioner Nesta is, is recommending that.
Why don't you second it as a sign of confidence in his abilities?
You'll have a chance to vote, oh, you'll, you'll have a chance to vote. Alright.
So you're not gonna second, no one's gonna second that?
Okay, what else, Commissioner Nesta?
I don't want to jeopardize that um. That.
As everybody on this council knows, the mayor has the power to make the appointment and y'all have the power to approve the appointment. The mayor has not made the appointment. Other than that, that's the only comment I can ma- tell you. You all know what the charter says.
Correct.
I don't have to tell you that, it's a fact.
It's a sign of confidence for this, that, that's the point of this.
And Chief Sanchez, uh, I, I know you know that you have my support.
Right.
And you've done our center job, and each time we had a conversation, it's always been on up and up, so. You got it.
I did, I did bring this, this subject matter up yesterday at the agenda meeting. So, um. Seconding it up here is, is really, and as the mayor says, sometimes our votes are ceremonial.
Well, then let this be a ceremonial.
Okay, so this will be a ceremonial. I second because I support. That I feel that since his appointment as the interim chief, I have seen. A tremendous uh im- uh morale. Uh, and support from the firefighters, and that's what's something we've been looking for, for the last two years. Was to kind of unify the fire, fire department, and that has occurred. And it is occurring. Certainly with the training and the, um, the. Increase of having our new firefighters, everything has been on the positive side.
So is that a ceremonial second?
A ceremonial second.
I'll take it there.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. What else? All those opposed? It's nothing to vote on.
It doesn't matter, I made the motion. You can't choose what not to vote, okay? So what were the votes there? Commissioner Anderson?
I'm not voting, cause there's nothing to vote on.
So you're abstaining from a vote?
We're not voting on something.
No, we're not.
We, we did, we absolutely did. So, if you're not voting, you'll, you'll have to fill out abstain paperwork and. Okay.
It's not a vote.
Okay, what else?
Uh, our mayor, are you gonna be turning off the live feed again to block public comment for all the rest of the public in our city and outside? So you will be?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's it.
Alright. Jacob, anything? Alright. Cliff, anything?
Okay, something hopefully everybody will be happy about. You will recall, the last time that the charter came up, I didn't know it would come up again, but one of the things that I brought up is that we still hadn't firmed up. Where we want our new election, proposed election, city election date to be, and the options that were on the table at that time were March. Which is where most of the municipalities do their city elections, or November, where we have the other statewide and national elections like the one we just went through. And I told you that at the time that you get ready to proceed, I had been told by the then uh. Dire- Director of Elections in Supervisor's Office under uh Supervisor Gilzian. That they would be happy to send someone, or maybe happy is not the right word, but they would be willing to send someone to answer your questions about whether it could be on November. As opposed to March, and your feelings about that, and their feelings about that. We now have a new supervisor of elections, Mayor, uh, Ms. Karen Castor-Dentel. I don't know exactly when she takes office, but the point is, if you are going to have this on for first reading at your next meeting, and we still have this undecided issue. It might be a good idea for her, or whoever's still the supervisor, to be contacted. To send someone to talk to you about that specific issue, which I know is outstanding. So if you would like me to do that. I will get on it and try to get them scheduled to come in at our next meeting. So you can have the discussion, the dialogue, to try to help you decide. November or March.
Okay, so you'll, you'll regouture then?
Yeah, so if, if that, if we are definitely gonna be on the next agenda, I'll do that.
Okay, good.
That's all I.
One thing I'd like you to probably wanna maybe wait a little bit, but let it marinate, but is the two uh. Charter amendments that passed, the Orange County Charter.
Yeah.
Would like you to bring forward, at least for discussion, the annexation, uh voluntary annexation, and also the rural settlements is how it relates to a popka. I don't know when the right time is, um, I, I would think, and I'm not even sure the county's got it all figured out yet, but maybe first meeting in January. As a, as kind of a uh placeholder for that, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Cliff. Okay, next up, mayor's report, a couple of things, um. Had uh, uh Representative Banks and also the pastor at um Victory Church. Is they're, they're uh looking to sell the church property, which obviously is right across Fifth Street from, from City Hall. And just wanna get a, a uh thought from the board, if that's something we wanna pursue. Uh, if, if so, then we could at least, and we got, obviously got, cause it's in the CRE, there's the whole CRE process and the city council process. But just trying to get a feel for, does city council like to at least say, yes, we're interested? I think they needed the lease back for a year to, to get things uh organized. Uh, but they're, you know, wanted to offer it to us first before they, and they've had some, some people that have sh- shown some interest, but. Uh, so I'm just trying to figure out if that's something we wanna pursue or not, and.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that you actually mentioned that, cause during the years that um Ed Bass was alive, that was something that. You know, I talked a lot about with him, um, and I knew that we were going to make a big investment in the public safety building. And I had said to him, would, would the city ever consider buying Victory Church and using that entire. Um footprint for the public safety, but at the time, um, I don't even believe that uh. And I believe uh State Representative Banksen was a commissioner, and it wasn't, he wasn't considering, I don't think he.
Sure.
You know, um, so of course, uh, I do remember that when uh State Representative Banksen. Decided to have, you know, when he bought the property and, and is expanding the school, and I know he's uh, um, building a new school. And I know that the other pastor that was supposed to take over his church, I thought that we had lost the opportunity. And then I. Just recently, uh State Representative Banksen had said that kind of the deal fell through. So I thought that would be an opportunity for the city to consider that.
Okay.
Um, because where we wanna build the public safety building, that's part of the footprint, that church.
Hmm, that, that would be one more block over, but.
But we would then have all of downtown.
That's fine, I mean, so I just, just looking, so is that a, at least make that initial inquiry is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson?
Well, at this time, I'm actually representing someone trying to purchase it, so I, I wouldn't be able to actually vote on that.
Oh, okay, okay.
And what will we use it for?
He didn't say, and I didn't ask, and so I, that. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know that we, we don't need it. If, you know, like we've got ITs moving into um, to the old chamber building, which that will free up space for. Um, the finance department, so they'll be in good shape if we, you know, obviously we're on the, kind of on the. The move to build the public safety building, which a lot of money there, which will take care of police, fire, dispatch. So, in the next ten years, could I see a use for it from the city? Not really, but. Um, uh, you know, as, as Commissioner Velazquez said, it's right next door, so it's, but.
But uh, aren't we out of office space upstairs? I mean, cause even with the uh Economic Development Direct, I, I said she was in a car.
Yeah, yeah. I mean. Obviously, that, that department grows, you know, with, with the, both sides, the building and the, the planning. You know, they're, they're, they're tight.
Yeah.
Um, so, I just, you know, looking for just kind of a.
What else would Victory Church be another?
Well, obviously, I, I think there's a church looking at it, um, I, I've heard there's a school looking at it.
Church, school use, coffee use is the person that I'm currently representing, is in the process of putting.
So, um, what's the price of it?
What's that?
What's the price?
I, I think just north of three million.
Three point one, three point one.
Okay, three point one. Okay, thank you. And then what, how would we pay for this?
Well, that's, yeah, that's, that's the next question, yeah. We'd probably have to, to, to bond it.
So, I'm, maybe I should ask you, mayor, um, do you think having that property would benefit the city as a?
If you're asking me, I'd love to have a business come in there, is Fifth Street really starts to ramp up, we're really starting to see progress on Fifth. Having a business that would be um supportive or be um, uh, that would help. That whole Fifth Street, you know, start to lift, I'd rather have something that would benefit. The, the merchants we already have on Fifth, my, my personal opinion.
Before that was a supermarket, right?
Way back in the day, yes. Yes, yes, yes. So, um, personally, you know, I, there are, there are, there are things I would like to have there. Um, if I could wave my, you know, my magic wand, it would be a business that, that would, that would be. Um, synergistic with what's already on Fifth, what that is, I don't know. Um, but, you know, something that we don't want would obviously be a negative, so I, I, I would, um. But we can, we can.
We probably don't have a commercial.
What's the zoning for that? What is the zoning for that?
I'm sure it's, I'm, I'm sure it's commercial. It's gotta be, cause if it was Wynn Dixon.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I, I, I think it's, it's worth looking into.
Just to kind of see, um, it's not a permanent. I mean, if he, he gets something that's a better deal and, and it works.
Okay.
I don't wanna stop the sale.
Commissioners might end up with an office.
It's a three point one million dollar expensive office.
So, Commissioner Nesta, you?
I, I, I understand that creating kind of a one complex and, and things like that, that's a, that's a big price tag, especially after we just raised taxes. Throughout the city and, and things like that, we just seem to be very cognitive of the money we're spending.
Okay, a couple other things here, um, just wanna congratulate Commissioner Smith. He got the two thousand twenty-four Institute for Elected Municipal Officials two certificate, number two certificate. So, congratulations, yeah. That's, I'm sorry, that's Florida League of Cities, that's, that was the, that's who I'm honoring. Okay, um, look, we've got the comp plan amendments are out there. We had, um, we've had very few, very little input, so if you've got people that wanna weigh in on the comp plan. We extended the, the deadline until December second, so if you've got people, they need to go on the, you know, look at the comp plan, if they got questions, they got, you know. Comments, they need to go, they need to go out and do, you know, get on it and give us their.
I did have a question uh about. I did, uh, question, uh, Bobby Howell on that. We had four responses.
Right, so.
Four.
We got it, you know.
And, um, and when we did the comp plan workshop, we didn't have all of the planning and zoning members. I remember there was only three.
Right.
And we have a new member. Um, so I had asked Bobby, would he consider another workshop? Only because I feel that, and he also agreed, that maybe the public doesn't understand what the comp plan is. Because the responses that he, um, shared with me, um, was, uh. We don't want any more development. It was, it was, it was comments that was, that didn't really apply to the comp plan.
Right.
So would that be a consideration?
What, what?
To have another workshop. Because he said the comp plan is really not due to August of twenty twenty-five. That's what he.
Okay, I mean, that's, I mean, we could do another workshop, I, you know, I.
I mean, that's up to the council, um.
No, I believe he said it was February.
Yeah, I don't say.
It was February twenty twenty-five.
So we don't have a lot of.
We don't have that much time.
Oh, oh, I asked him yesterday, what was the drop dead?
It was February twenty twenty-five.
Check, how, how about this? What if we, um, put together, I get with Bobby, we put together a nice little editorial for the Apaca chief. And, um, and we can also do the voice, putting out some of the things that, that we're looking for. And see if we can get some, some push. And if you want to move another week or so, we could do that. Uh, by get something in the paper for next, um, not this Friday, but next Friday. I'll try to get a, something in there that kind of talk about what, what we're looking for. What, what input from it. So I, I'll definitely, I'll get, I'll get with Bobby, and we'll, we'll put that together.
Okay.
Okay? Um, uh, let's see, two other things, debris cleanup. We have done our first pass all the way through the city. So everything, everybody's been picked up. Uh, we'll be on our second pass. Josh thinks we'll be done completely on before Thanksgiving. So before next Thursday. That's, that's his goal, is to be completely done with debris cleanup. Um, last but not least, the, um, Apaca recycling event really went over well. We recycled eleven hundred ninety-seven pounds of paper, which was three times as much as we did last year. And recycled five thousand six hundred fourteen pounds of electronics, eleven pallets, thirteen hundred more pounds than last year. Lot of TV, so really successful event. So, thanks Steve, Stephen Cribb for that effort. Okay, with that, we are ready for public comment.
Alright, Susan, give me a second to set up, please.